It's gonna be a bit expensive phone call because we got to have say the pledge of allegiance and the flag and call us all to order.
It's only ten dollars today.
Oh wow, oh wow, oh wow. Good evening ladies and gentlemen and welcome to Government Center. Again, I apologize for being about fifteen minutes late starting this meeting, but we had some unusual circumstances in an executive session that went a little longer than we had anticipated. But we are here to get started and there are one, two, three, four, five commissioners here and I count for a quorum. A quorum is six and you have to have six commissioners physically present to constitute a quorum. If a quorum of commission is assembled here, our charter and rules of procedure allow a commissioner who is out of the district to call in and vote by phone. And tonight, we have Commissioner Valerie Nguyen who is on vacation and is calling in, so she'll be on the phone and will be voting on a couple of issues that we want to move out of order so that she can hang up and get back to her vacation rather than waiting. So we'll start the meeting and then amend the agenda to move a couple of items up. But we want to start this meeting as we do all of our meetings with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. Pastor Leon Ward from New Birth Missionary Baptist Church has very graciously agreed to come be with us tonight. And Pastor Ward, if you would come up and if you would have your members to come stand behind you and as you are through with the invocation or when you're through with the invocation, they'll lead us in the pledge. Would you stand as you are able, ladies and gentlemen, for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
To all, to the mayor, commissioner, appointed officials, citizens at large, associates and friends of our community. I am profoundly pleased and thankful in leading this body into communicating and reaching out to the Lord in prayer tonight. With that being said, let us pray, let us bow our heads. Our Father, Jehovah God, we pause here in this place where local governmental decisions are continuously being made. And as we are paused to pray, we collectively say thank you for all that you do in our daily lives. Equally so, we thank you for your forgiveness of the times when we fell short in doing your holy will. We ask now that you would look upon this group of leaders in our community and bless them where you see that they need to be blessed. I pray, O God, also for those that are in Washington that are making prudent choices and decisions, that you would give them sagacity to make right determinations. I pray that you give each of them a mind here that is in line with your will. I pray that they will be on one accord. Yet, I am kingly aware that there will be moments when they may not. So instill in each of them to be wise in disagreeing moments. I pray that the outcomes of tonight's meeting will be in accordance with your will and in acceptance of your people who live in our community. I lift these petitions and proclamations before you in the name of Jesus the Christ and all to the people of God, say amen. And now for the pledge of allegiance.
May you please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for...
Thank you.
Be seated ladies and gentlemen. One item of housekeeping now that we need to take up. We have, let me see, let me see, let me see. Yeah, the consent agenda is there and ready, but we have four items of new, four items of new business that were discussed in the pre-commission meeting. The first is a resolution to authorize the issuance of an RFP, request for proposals, or RFQ, request for qualifications concerning outsourcing of business development services to see if there is a private vendor that would submit a proposal to us for our consideration. That's item A. Item B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the low bidder, McCoy Grading Incorporated, for construction improvements of the Middle Georgia State University roundabout and new entrance way off of Eisenhower Parkway. Item three is a companion agreement, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a construction license agreement with the Board of Regents to build the road on their property until the road is completed and the right of way is deeded back to us. And finally, a resolution to approve the appointment of Duke Grover with the firm of James Bates Brennan &amp; Grover LLP as interim county attorney. Can I get a motion to add those items to this agenda and either collectively or individually? Got a motion to add all four, Scotty? Motion, motion to add all four, second by Commissioner Allen to add all four. Is there any discussion about adding these four items to our agenda for action tonight? Hearing none, all in favor of adding these items to the agenda signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? Got a delayed aye on the phone from Commissioner Nguyen, so the ayes have it and those items are added to our agenda for action tonight. Now, because I've got Commissioner on vacation calling in, can I get a motion to take two items out of order? One being the pay raise that was approved in pre-commission and the second being the roundabout, the two, the two items, the roundabout construction awarding the contract and the agreement with the Board of Regents, that we need both of those. Can I take all three of those out of order at this point and proceed on them? Is there objection to that? Then I want to do that. But is there anybody here, because we always want to hear from people before we act, if items, is anybody here that wants to address us on either of these items? Number one being the temporary, temporary or one-time pay adjustment and the other being the roundabout at Middle Georgia State University? Good, then we'll proceed then to act on those items. So the first of those, Janice, if you can find it?
Yes, sir.
Will be the, let's do the pay raise first, alright? Find that for me and then read that, read that by caption for me, please ma'am.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of $2,229,275 from fund balance in the FY20 budget to fund a one-time pay adjustment in the amount of $1,000 to be paid to Macon-Bibb County employees, employed for a minimum of 30 days on the paycheck issued on December 20th, 2019, and for other lawful purposes.
The approval amended, the invited guests, the public comments, reports from committees at this time? I was going to go back and do those next. I was, I was taking these out of order and moving them up to the, to the front of the agenda so that we've got somebody on the phone calling in and what we're trying to accommodate that so that we could get that vote on these items. Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. The operations and finance committee recommends approval of this ordinance. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it and we had an affirmative vote by Valerie Nguyen on the phone, so that would be six votes aye, okay? The next item, if you can find it for me, please ma'am? Would be the resolution to award the contract for Middle Georgia State University and read that by caption, please.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with McCoy Grading Incorporated for the construction of improvements to the entrance to Middle Georgia State University at a cost of $2,140,760.55 payable from SPOS bond proceeds and/or SPOS revenues and for other lawful purposes.
The operations and finance or was it committee of the whole?
I don't know if any committee has the pool of business, I have questions.
Okay, I believe, I believe by consent it was brought here and added to the agenda, so you're right. So, so, so further, further discussion. Commissioner Watkins?
Yeah, so it wasn't in operations and finance, I have concerns about the contract that was awarded, procurement process. Was this the lowest bidder, was this the only bidder?
No, 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 there were several bidders and this was the low bidder. McCoy, McCoy, McCoy Grading.
I haven't had the opportunity, I assume it's on the, on the, but you turned this into us today, so again, did locals participate, was there any preference applied?
To my knowledge, there was no preference.
Well, I mean, again, I just have overwhelming concerns about a $2.1 million contract with no vetting. So if you could answer my questions now or we can send it back to committee would be my preference.
I'm not able to answer those questions and I don't think Chauncey Wilmore, procurement officer, is, is here or available to, so I'll take that as a, as a...
Here's the bid form.
Janice is providing me with the bid form that went in. Oh, well, I, I don't, I don't think that we're gonna be able to answer your question. I'm not smart enough to cipher all the, all the procurement forms that were attached to it, so, oh, thank Crystal, thank you. That would be absolutely wonderful. Let me call on Crystal to talk about the procurement procedure.
On May 17th, 2019... This was published on the procurement page, an invitation for bids. A total of 137 vendors were notified, a total of 33 African Americans, six Asian Americans, six Native Americans, four Hispanic Latinos and one Pacific Islander vendor were notified. On the responsive date, which would have been June 20th of 2019, they received, it doesn't indicate how many responses they received, however, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder was McCoy Grading, Inc. And looking at the further attachments, it looks like, I'm not sure why, but normally there's a tabulation sheet. Janice, do you have that? I don't see that included in here, so I can't answer your question as to how many people responded, however, this was determined to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Jones, got your light on next, sir.
Yes, sir. My, my question is, refresh my memory on the participation as it relates to Middle Georgia State University. What is their participation as far as dollars in this project? Do we, do we know that?
We've had numerous discussions about it, including out there at Middle Georgia State University and here on previous committee, commission meetings.
Right, I just don't recall the number.
I don't either, but, but it's in the millions of dollars because the new student welcome center building, this to be right beside the roundabout, it's about $2.5 million is going to be a key part of the project. Plus, this is relocating the entrance down to Romizer Road, which is a traffic signal and will be safer for traffic coming in and out of Middle Georgia State than the existing entrance and it in connection with landscaping improvements that Middle Georgia State University is making around the front of the building and over there, all the way down to the exit ramp off of I-475 to improve it. My impression is they're spending somewhere between six and eight million dollars.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all, all in favor of the resolution to award the contract to McCoy Grading, $2,140,760.55 syndicate by saying aye? Oppose, no? Got one, one no, got an affirmative vote from Commissioner Nguyen, so one, two, three, four and five, five, five votes to award the contract to McCoy, one no. The companion resolution is for the licensing agreement with the Board of Regents to allow us to build the new roadway and part of the entrance on their property until completed and then deed the right of way back to us at that point in time. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a construction license agreements with the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia and with Middle Georgia State University Real Estate Foundation Incorporated for the purpose of construction of improvements to the entrance to Middle Georgia State University and for other lawful purposes.
Is there further discussion about this companion agreement? If not, can I get a, a motion to approve? And a second by Commissioner Shepherd? All, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? Got, again, one no, affirmative vote from Commissioner Nguyen, so five to one, this companion resolution is adopted. Now, that takes us back to our standard order of business and getting back on the agenda for the regular, regular meeting. And the next item on the agenda would be approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. The minutes of our meeting of July the 2nd for our pre-commission meeting were prepared and issued as well as the minutes of our regular commission meeting held on July the 2nd. Are there any changes or corrections or deletions? If not, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes? Got a motion by Allen, second by Shepherd to approve the minutes as prepared, all in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it and minutes are approved. Next, invited guests, we have a special invited guest here with us tonight and I appreciate his patience and waiting for us, sorry that we've been a little delayed, but let me ask Steve Landers and anybody with Steve, as well as Spencer Hawkins, to come up to the podium. With me. Steve, you ain't changed a bit. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor and it reads as follows. Whereas Mr. Steve Landers is a member of the Macon-Bibb County Emergency Management Volunteer Group that supports our Emergency Management Agency and other public safety agencies, and whereas for the past 50 years, Mr. Landers has provided services as a member of the Macon-Bibb County Emergency Management Volunteer Group that supports the citizens of Macon-Bibb County. Whereas Mr. Landers has aided in the search and rescue for numerous missing persons, has provided communications support and delivered medicine during the blizzard of 1973, has worked side by side, excuse me, with the National Guard and provided food and water during the flood of 1994, and whereas Mr. Landers to this day continues to support our Emergency Management Agency and other public safety responders on numerous major events. Now, therefore, I Robert A. B. Rickert hereby proclaim July the 16th, 2019, is Steve Landers' appreciation day in Macon-Bibb County, and I encourage all citizens to congratulate him on his momentous accomplishment and his dedication to the service of public safety and witness whereof I have heron to set my hand, cause the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed the 16th day. Steve, I'd like to present this to you at this time along with my appreciation for 50 years of service. And Spencer Hawkins, if you've got anything you want to say, come up.
Thank you, sir. I am going to actually turn it over to the volunteer president, Angie Riley, she's got a few, a few comments.
As Spencer said, my name is Angie Riley, I'm the president of the Macon-Bibb County Volunteer Group. Today, we're here to celebrate a life of volunteering 50 years, and if that doesn't get it, I don't know what does. There will never be enough thank yous to amount to the time and dedication that Steve has given unselfishly. I would like to thank Gina for her sacrifice and I would like to thank his children, Christopher and Stephanie, for their sacrifice. Steve has played many a roles since 1969 and he has filled a lot of shoes and worn a lot of hats. But I will tell you this, as a fellow volunteer, I would like to thank you for your presence, for your graciousness, for your dedication and sacrifice, as with all of your fellow volunteers. The Macon-Bibb County Volunteer Group would like to thank you for your time and we will, I will leave you with this. And this is something that I found just recently and it says, "And as for you, brothers and sisters, never tire of doing what is good." So thank you for 50 years.
Thank you.
Well, that was, I don't know about you, that was, that was inspiring, 50, 50 years, 50 years of service. By, by the way, the pastor got away from me before I could thank him. Although, there he is, there he is. Reverend Leon Ward Jr. is a founding pastor of New Birth Missionary Baptist Church of Macon, born and raised in Macon, joined St. Mary's Baptist Church as a child, later joined a greater New Corinth Baptist Church where he was ordained a deacon in his early twenties and preached his first sermon, March the 28th, 1976. Previously served as a member on Macon-Bibb County Planning and Zoning Board, and while in Israel, Pastor Ward preached in the Upper Room, was baptized in the Jordan River and has visited many sites that Jesus visited. Pastor Ward and his wife, Jerry Reeves Ward, of 48 years, my goodness gracious sake's alive, 48 years, have three adult daughters and six grandchildren. Pastor Ward, again, thank you for being here with us and he brought with him two of the members of his congregation, Kenjara Brundage. Kenjara is a daughter of Johnny Brown and Kendra Brundage, she will be a senior at Southwest High School. Woo, go Patriots! Southwest High School for the upcoming 2019, 2020 school year. In addition to maintaining As and Bs in all of her classes, Kenjara is an active member of the school band and junior ROTC. She recently participated in junior ROTC Leadership Camp and was awarded the patriotic leadership ribbon. She's also promoted to Cadet Master Sergeant. When not focusing on her academics and extracurricular activities, Kenjara enjoys being an active part of her church family, New Birth Missionary Baptist Church of Macon. She's an integral part of the church...
Steve has played many a roles since 1969 and he has filled a lot of shoes and worn a lot of hats. But I will tell you this, as a fellow volunteer, I would like to thank you for your presence, for your graciousness, for your dedication and sacrifice, as with all of your fellow volunteers. The Macon Bibb County Volunteer Group would like to thank you for your time. And we will, I will leave you with this. And this is something that I found just recently and it says, "And as for you brothers and sisters, never tire of doing what is good." So thank you for fifty years.[352.15][352.87](applause).
It's a booby trap. Well, that was, I don't know about you, that was inspiring, fifty years of service. By the way, the pastor got away from me before I could thank him. Although, there he is, there he is. Reverend Leon Ward Jr. is a founding pastor of New Birth Missionary Baptist Church of Macon, born and raised in Macon. Joined St. Mary's Baptist Church as a child. Later joined Greater New Corinth Baptist Church where he was ordained a deacon in his early twenties and preached his first sermon, March the 28th, 1976. Previously served as a member on Macon Bibb County Planning and Zoning Board. And while in Israel, Pastor Ward preached in the Upper Room, was baptized in the Jordan River and has visited many sites that Jesus visited. Pastor Ward and his wife, Jerry Reeves Ward, of forty-eight years, my goodness gracious, alive, forty-eight years, have three adult daughters and six grandchildren. Pastor Ward, again, thank you for being here with us. And he brought with him two of the members of his congregation. Kenjara Brundage. Kenjara is a daughter of Johnny Brown and Kendra Brundage. She will be a senior at Southwest High School. Woo, go Patriots! Southwest High School for the upcoming 2019-2020 school year. In addition to maintaining As and Bs in all of her classes, Kenjara is an active member of the school band and junior ROTC. She recently participated in junior ROTC Leadership Camp and was awarded the Patriotic Leadership Ribbon. She's also promoted to Cadet Master Sergeant. When not focusing on her academics and extracurricular activities, Kenjara enjoys being an active part of her church family, New Birth Missionary Baptist Church of Macon. She's an integral part of the church's mass choir and praise team. So Kenjara, thank you for being here. And Dequavious Ron Coon. Dequavious, thank you for being here. He's the son of Alyssa Brundage and Ron Coon. Dequavious is fifteen years old and attends Northeast High School. Dequavious is an honest student and will be a sophomore. What do y'all do with having Northeast and Southwest? We've got a little rivalry going on, a little rivalry going on here. Sophomore this year. Dequavious has honestly included Beta Club, perfect attendance. He also plays on the Junior Varsity Basketball Team. He's an active member of New Birth Missionary Baptist Church under the leadership of Dr. Leon Ward Jr. He's part of several church ministries which include the Junior Treasurer and Junior Usher. And Dequavious loves God and learning his word. He hates to miss church, takes his Bible with him when he's unable to attend services. Favorite scripture is John 3:16. Dequavious, thank you. And isn't it wonderful when we hear so much bad stuff about young people? Isn't it great to have two such wonderful examples of young people coming up the right way? Thank you and best of luck to you. We appreciate you being here with us tonight.[670.25][670.25](applause). Next item on our agenda is public comments on agenda items. This is when we try to give you a chance to talk to us before we vote on something. And we had a couple people to sign up. Dr. Lindsey Holliday wants to talk to us about Item L, privatization of government services. Dr. Holliday, thank you for being with us. We appreciate you recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm against any privatization of real government services. I think the garbage debacle is the best example. I preached against it back when there was a Mayor Ellis. I preached against it when y'all decided to do it. And now with privatized garbage, we've got open missing lids over thousands of containers with rainwater and mosquitoes and stink. And it's just not healthy. And if, and when I try to complain and I go on the privatized complaint service, See, Click, Fix, it's probably the most useless diversion I've ever seen. I've complained about a missing lid on my garbage can for three months. It was one month in front of my neighbor's house and I said, "Look, let me try to fix that for you." So I dragged it in front of my house. And time after time, I entered on See, Click, Fix, there's a missing broken garbage lid. Privatized government services do not work, sir. If you don't want to manage part of government, maybe you should hand it over to somebody else. That's what city government is for. It's for fixing, it's for keeping our streets clean, it's for picking up garbage, it's for having a good police force. And here you want to privatize something else. You want to privatize some kind of permitting. Now, if it's a government place, I go to get a permit, you know that guy is on nine-to-five job, he's just going to do the right thing, probably. But if it's a privatized service, I need, I need this permit. And I know you're in a privatized business. Can't we just fix something? Let's get this permit. I need this permit. You don't privatize important government services. You run it or you give the government to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comment. Next, Mr. George Mohammed wants to talk to us about parking lot operations in the Urban Development Authority. Mr. Mohammed, welcome. You've recognized up to five minutes, sir.
Peace and blessings. I first of all wanted to bring to your attention the fact that that parking lot is used by the Douglas Theater after hours, basically after six. And for the duration of the Douglas's renovation existence, it, the parking has been free to patrons. And of course, that makes it a little easier for patrons to want to come to various events, whether it's films or, you know, performing arts on the stage or whatever's going on. It makes it easy for the people if they don't have to pay a parking fee. If you look at most of our cultural attractions, such as the Tubman Museum, the Georgia Sports Hall of Fame, Museum of Arts and Sciences, Og Mogi National Monument, the Grand Opera House, the parking is free. In the case of the Grand, they can make it free, they have their own parking lot. And then if you go right across the intersection there, I think it's First Street, parking up the hill is free. So what we're concerned about is that the parking is not a twenty-four hour parking fee and it ends up being a thing that's potentially an impediment or just an additional weight of people attending, coming to the Douglas Theater. Now, I do have a concern in general about the Urban Development Authority. And I think all of our authorities do some good work for the community, but they are rather mysterious entities that really need to have a greater clarification in the community. It really disturbed me when the Tubman Museum was put into, it was either a SPOSS or consolidation bill. People were voting for 2.5 million for it to be finished. And when it was finished, what happened was that it became owned by the Urban Development Authority. And I think a lot of people didn't realize that that was what was going to happen. That's one of the concerns that I have. And giving a certain group too much latitude can be a dangerous thing. The parking meters are another serious controversy downtown. A lot of people, you know, there are some, some good things about being able to collect for parking, but it's really revenues that by rights belong to the Bibb County taxpayers because it's Bibb County right-of-way, Macon Bibb County right-of-way. And we are struggling as a county financially. It is a stream of income that really should be coming into our coffers. And, and so now adding an additional parking lot up under this entity is a questionable move that I would like you all to look at carefully. But my key point to you was to consider the fact that the Douglas Theater is one of our key, one of our major institutions of tourism, as well as of service to the community, education to the community, entertainment to the community. And if you do decide, and I'm not going to be able to stay for your vote, but, because I got to run. But if you do decide to do that, I would like to continue to have that relationship with the Douglas where the tickets can be validated and the patrons not charged in the evening. And I would ask you to please look carefully at these authorities and look at getting the community a better insight and education as to how they're working, particularly the situation with the Tubman Museum, because we would not want to suddenly lose that to some other purpose or some other entity. And of course, the Urban Development Authority currently owns it, as well as a number of other things downtown that people may or may not be aware of. And again, these parking meters, well, I know commissioners, I know y'all are not really pleased with that yourselves. So please look at it carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Appreciate you being here and appreciate your comment. Next item on our agenda, reports from standing committees. First committee is Operations and Finance Committee. And that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
The Finance and Operations Committee met on July 9th, 2019 and took the following actions. The committee approved the following SPOSS projects. The appropriations of 2.5 million dollars from SPOSS bond proceeds and/or SPOSS revenues for the economic development industrial line item shown as, as shown on SPOSS Project 2018 project timeline in conjunction with the intergovernmental agreement between the Macon Bibb County and the Macon Bibb County Industrial Authority. We also approved up to $400,000 from SPOSS bond revenues to provide funding to facilitate the move of municipal court into the courthouse. The committee approved the following agreements. A memorandum of understanding between the Macon Bibb County and the Health Department for RAVI's Veterinary Investigation and Quarantine Services. An agreement with COT Systems in the amount of $79,820 to be used to purchase equipment for online indexing of books and record management of the land records documents. And we approved a bipartisan agreement for the funding and operations of the Macon Bibb County Transit Authority. The committee approved the following supplemental appropriations. The transfer of $52,500 from fund balance in the FY19 budget to the Public Defender's Professional Services outside council and office supplies accounts to pay contract invoices. To transfer funds in the amount of $23,200 from the state court judge's salaries and wages full times to the contract labor temporary workers account for temporary salaries covered by vacancies and full-time salaries. And to transfer 2.2 million dollars from fund balance in the FY20 budget to fund a one-time pay adjustment in the amount of $1,000 to be paid to the Macon Bibb County employees for, that have worked a minimum of thirty days on their paycheck issued December 20th, 2019. This concludes the report of operations and finance.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. No, no report, I understand, from Economic and Community Development Committee, no report from Public Safety Committee. So that brings us to Facilities and Engineering Committee and that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Settledies and Engineering also met July the 9th and took the following action on this item. The committee approved the three-party contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation and Central of Georgia Railroad Company for the replacement of the College Street Railroad Bridge near Appleton Lane at no cost to the county. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. That, all of the committee reports, that brings us to the consent agenda. There are two applications for alcohol licenses. Both of these have been before the committee of the whole on previous occasions. The first is SMD14 LLC doing business USA Grocery at 2827 Houston Avenue. It had the approval of the Sheriff's Department of a satisfactory background check. It had planning and zoning compliance approval for appropriate zoning. It had the approval of the county engineer that the distance requirements were all satisfied as far as separation from certain structures. However, the advertisement that had run in the Macon Telegraph had run more than six months prior to our consideration. So the committee of the whole tabled it at that point in time and asked them to rerun the advertisement. They have rerun the advertisement concerning this license. And it certified the ad that ran and was finalized on June the 22nd of 2019. Committee of the whole recommends approval at this point of the alcohol licenses. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins?
Could you refresh my memory on, is this the location that the Housing Authority objected to?
No.
Has this location been involved in any Rico gambling?
No. No, this was, this was a clean app and the only reason it was delayed, tabled last time was to get them to rerun the ad. So they rerun the ad now. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of issuance of the license, 75% aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, that license will be issued as requested. The second is a little more complicated. This was a problematic license, 2760 Montpelier Avenue, BJP Gas and Food Mart LLC. The sheriff indicated that he thought the license ought to be issued only upon certain conditions. The committee of the whole heard that and recommended that the sheriff would discuss those conditions that he wanted placed on the application and on the sale of alcohol at that location. And I think the short, the easy thing for me to do is to read the affidavit that was prepared and executed by the applicant. Excuse me, it was prepared by our county attorney's office and signed by the applicant. And it reads as follows. "I, Banu Parthap, have received a copy of the attached letter from Sheriff Davis setting out the recommended conditions for my business, BJP Gas and Food Mart LLC, to operate under an alcohol license, 2760 Montpelier Avenue. I understand the Macon Bibb County Commission has recommended granting my license subject to the recommended conditions, with the requirement that these conditions must be met within thirty days of obtaining my license. I understand that these conditions are being imposed in lieu of denying my license application based on an alleged history of dangerous or illegal conduct in the vicinity of this location. I understand I have the right to a hearing to determine whether the commission has a proper factual basis for imposing conditions on my license. I understand that at such a hearing, I would have the right to present witnesses and evidence to cross-examine the county's witnesses and dispute the county's evidence. I understand that following a hearing, an objective opinion would be prepared by a neutral special master and that the commission would make a final determination based on those findings. Understanding these rights, I wish to waive my right to a hearing and accept the commission's decision to grant my license as applied for, subject to the conditions stated by the commission. I understand that failure to meet any of these conditions within the time provided would be grounds for revoking my license." Signed by Banu Parthap. The conditions that are attached pursuant to the sheriff's office and on his stationery and signed by him are to move the dumpster to a better location on the property, repair the fence on the property, put no loitering signs on the property, strictly follow the laws concerning selling of alcohol and cigarettes, i.e. no single cigarette sales, and adhere to the age limit when selling alcohol and cigarettes. Ensure store security cameras are operable and provide adequate lighting at night on the property. Based on those conditions, the sheriff has signed off on this and recommends approval. It's up now to us. It was discussed at the prior meeting, but I need a motion to issue this license, subject to the conditions and the applicant's agreement to abide by those conditions or have his license revoked. Got a motion by Commissioner, Allen, second by Commissioner Shepherd. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of issuing the license, subject to those restrictions and conditions imposed by the sheriff, 75% aye. Opposed, no? It did. It failed, it failed. So got four yes, one no, it failed. So that license will not be issued and we'll have further discussion about that, I'm sure. All right, that moves us from the consent agenda to the whole, to whole business. To whole, to whole business. And the first item of whole business concerns a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement concerning the parking deck on Mulberry, Mulberry Street. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Macon Bibb County Industrial Authority, the Bibb County School District, and the Macon Bibb County Urban Development Authority related to the implementation of a long-term management plan for the 4040 Mulberry Street parking garage and for other purposes.
This was approved by the committee of the whole, subject to a question by Commissioner Jones about the term of the lease. We have, we have now gone and have all of the attachments that are currently in existence to the agreement, which are attachments A, D, and E. Item attachments B and C are not here. Item B and C ought to be negotiated for terms of the transfer between the Industrial Authority and the Urban Development Authority and the reservation of leased spaces by the Bibb County Board of Education and the Urban Development Authority. So those two are yet to be negotiated, but would be negotiated only if we put the master agreement in place. The agreement-
I can give them further information if they need that.
I'm sorry?
I can give them further information.
Yes, that would be great. Let me call on the county attorney to kind of clarify that.
With regard to Exhibit B, it will be substantially the same as the agreement that has been in place with the Board of Education since 1993. There aren't very many changes that can be made with regard to that agreement. With regard to the agreement with, I believe it's the, is it the Industrial Authority? That one is something that they're going to have to negotiate, but they think it's going to take approximately one month with the meeting schedules to get both of those separate agreements approved.
And this would be, Commissioner Jones, a transfer of ownership from the Industrial Authority to the Urban Development Authority. And the Urban Development Authority in turn would execute this service agreement with linear parking for the operation and management of the parking deck. Got to get a motion in a second. No, it came out, it came, it came, it came out of committee, it came out of the committee of the whole. Commissioner Lucas was the one that moved and it was, it came out of the committee of the whole. So is there further discussion? Commissioner Allen, I got your light on, sir. Here.
Here. We have a process that we can help people wanting to go to the Grand, I mean, go to the Douglas and be able to park in the parking deck over there, since they're not getting, receiving a ticket after 8 o'clock.
I'm confident that we could approach the Urban Development Authority and ask them to deal with Lanier Parking for special dispensation and letting them stamp tickets at the Douglas to validate the parking.
That's a major concern that I've got.
I'm confident, I'm confident we could do that. It's not in this, but, but I'm confident.
Even when we were talking about this, discussing it, it did not even cross my mind about the parking, except then when he came down and talked to us about it, and we know they stopped giving tickets at 8 o'clock, or supposedly. If they're, if they're able to park there, when the show starts at 7 o'clock, and they're not giving tickets after 8 o'clock.
I'm, I'm-
I'm hoping that we'll follow up on that.
I will.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins, got you next.
Since, since that time, I've talked to Alex Morrison, the director of the UDA, about this issue, and he ensures that parking for the Douglas will always be free.
Boom, okay. Commissioner Bibbins, got your light on, sir.
I, I just wanted to ask that we agree to have that discussion to see if that parking was free, but if they've already agreed to that, then there wouldn't be any parking.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. That takes us to Item B under whole business, and Item B is our annual payment of splot dollars to the Industrial Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of $2,500,000 from splot bond proceeds and our splot revenues from the calendar year 2019 Economic Development Industrial Line item, as shown on the 2018 Splot Project Timeline and Budget, in conjunction with the intergovernmental agreement between Macon Bibb County and the Macon Bibb County Industrial Authority, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate some additional special purpose local option sales tax bond proceeds for the relocation of the municipal court to the courthouse, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to $400,000 from splot bond revenues and our splot bond proceeds to provide funding to facilitate the move by municipal court to the courthouse and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Item D is a contract with Dell Financial Services LLC for licensing of Microsoft Windows products, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an installment agreement with Dell Financial Services LLC in the amount of $655,802.02 per year for three years, for a total of $1,967,406.06 for countywide Microsoft Windows, Server, and Office Suite Enterprises software licenses to be paid from IT's repair and maintenance software license and maintenance budget and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. And next is a resolution to execute a new bi-party agreement with the Macon Bibb County Transit Authority, and I recall it reduces the reserve funding requirement from 45 days to 30 days, I believe was the addition. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a bi-party agreement for the funding and operation of the Macon Bibb County Transit Authority in substantially the same form as attached hereto as Exhibit A and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item F is an ordinance to transfer $52,500 for the public defenders office, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of $52,500 from fund balance in the FY '19 budget to the Public Defenders' Professional Services Outside Counsel and Office Supplies Account to pay contract invoices and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to transfer funds in the State Court Judge's office, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY '19 budget for the transfer of funds in the total amount of $23,200 from the State Court Judge's salary and wages full-time account to the Contract Labor Temporary Workers' Account for temporary salaries covered by vacancies and full-time salaries and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution to approve an MOU with the Health Department for Rabies Veterinary Investigation and Quarantine Services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between Macon Bibb County and the Macon Bibb County Health Department for Rabies Veterinary Investigation and Quarantine Services and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to authorize the May to execute an agreement with COT Systems for purchase for the online indexing of books and records in the Superior Court Clerk's office, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Macon Bibb County and COT Systems Incorporated in the amount of $79,820 to be used to purchase equipment for the online indexing of books and record management of land record documents to be paid from the Superior Court Clerk's budget and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. We have already handled the next item, Item J, that was the ordinance for the pay increase. That moves us to Item K, which is authorizing the mayor to execute a tri-party agreement for the bridge on College Street over the railroad near Appleton Lane, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter a three-part party contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation and Central of Georgia Railroad Company for the replacement of the College Street Railroad Bridge near Appleton Lane at no cost to the county and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to issue an RFP RFQ for the possible outsourcing of business development services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the Macon Bibb County Administration to issue a solicitation for the purpose of evaluating the feasibility and cost associated with contracting out all functions of the Permit Division of the Business Development Services Department to a private vendor, subject to the caveats contained herein, to transfer the function of the Licensing Division of the Business Development Services Department to the Office of the Tax Commissioner and for other lawful purposes.
This was discussed at the pre-commission meeting, but I need a motion here in a second. Got a motion by Commissioner Shepherd, second by Commissioner Allen. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins?
What will be the, if this, what is this, what are the functions of the Business Development Services Department if not licenses and permits? What functions are you trying to privatize? I'm not-
It would primarily be the, the plan review and the inspections and code enforcement, those three we would, we would retain. The, the business licensing renewal, we're looking to transfer the, the collection to the Tax Commissioner's office, because he's got the software to do it online, they could renew it online. But, but the plan review, the inspections, and code enforcement would be retained, this is just outsourcing it. We've had somebody there for the last 60 days, kind of looking at it and assessing it. The general consensus was put out an RFP RFQ and see what kind of terms and conditions people might be willing to do it for, and then make the decision on that. So, this is really just to kind of put the RFP RFQ out to see what responses we get.
For the licensing permit?
Plan, plan, plan review, inspections, and code enforcement.
And then your business development department would, what would be left in business development services?
Those three things. This would be outsourced, if that's, but they would, they would have a physical presence here in the same office, and even wear the same uniforms and put the same decal on the side of the car.
And that's cheaper than hiring people?
We certainly, we certainly, we certainly, in, in the committee of the whole, where this was discussed, we certainly think so, and certainly to ramp up part of the, the cost savings that they are hoping to acquire is, is to cross-train inspectors so that they can do electrical, foundation, HVAC, and plumbing, rather than sending four different people on four different days out to do single individualized inspections. But, it's going to take some time to ramp up to that, but they think they can do that and get the training, get these same employees trained to do that. Are you? Is, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution to issue the RFP and see what responses we get, indicate by saying aye. Oppose, no. We got, got one no, so it fails, so four to, four, four to one didn't get the requisite number of votes. That takes us, Item M was previously handled, Item N was previously handled. Takes us now to Item O, which is a resolution to approve the appointment of Duke Grover with the firm of James Bates, Brennan, and Grover LLP as interim county attorney. We discussed that in the pre-commission meeting, but I need a, a motion and second. Got a, got a motion by Allen, second by Shepherd now. Further, further discussion on that? Commissioner Jones?
Comments after, before we take the vote, just to-
Sir?
Just to comment before we take the actual vote, this is to add it to the agenda.
No, 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 this, we're, we're, we're down, we're down at that item on the agenda. We're getting close to the end here.
Brief comments for the public, we, we lost a real good county attorney in Judge Drake, who'd served us so well for so long. We have two excellent assistant county attorneys. We had about three different options, the best of which, in my view, was to consult with Duke Grover and James Bates, and pleasantly surprised he would want to take it on himself in concert with, with Lawrence, and he's represented the county for some 27 years effectively and honorably, and, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to, until we can hire a new county attorney, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Watkins, got your light on next, sir.
In the contract reading, it reads that the, the firm of Duke Grover, James Bates, and Brennan and Grover were available for 10 hours a week at the contract price?
And primarily Duke Grover, so, so it's primarily assigned to him.
We discussed in committee briefly that, you know, we work a 40-hour work week here, and 10 hours is not equivalent to 40. I wanted to make an amendment to strike the 10 hours and replace for just the 2,000 flat a week. I think that was verbally mentioned in our meeting.
It was. Rather than trying to keep up, rather than trying to keep the time and track the hours, they was really going to rely just basically on the cap of $2,000 a week.
Yeah, for the contract to reflect what we agreed to verbally.
Right, and, and the more, the more important thing was that if additional services are required, be negotiated and approved by the commission.
And I guess, and that's what the contract reads, but I, I think I understood the verbal conversation we had, that the $2,000 was going to be a flat rate?
Why don't, why don't we let Duke Grover speak to us, if that's okay, without objection, let him, let him speak. Duke, thank you very much for being here, sir.
Absolutely, I have no objection to that amendment.
Thank you. So, we got, we got a, a motion to, to make the amendment, supposed to be in writing, but I think we can do this and scribble something down and satisfy the writing requirement to say that it's kept.
It doesn't actually result in a change in the resolution, it just results in a change to the contract.
Okay, so it doesn't, that doesn't require a change of the resolution, the resolution just says "high in pursuit" to the letter of agreement, so we'll modify the letter of agreement just, just to say $2,000 a week. In other words, to strike out $200 per hour for 10 hours, just strike that part and just say $2,000 a week. Thank you. Okay, yes, sir. Well, that was, that was, that was a motion? We need a second to that? You did, so we had a motion and a second. We didn't vote on it yet, though, did we?
No, sir, we have-
Okay, all in favor of the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All right, so the amendment passes now on the resolution as amended. Motion by Allen, second, well, actually, I guess it was motioned in second to the first and amended, so the motion in second is still good, right? Okay, so, good. Is there further discussion on the resolution as amended? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution as amended is adopted. Very good, that takes us to the last item, which is the new business, and there's only been one item of new business that has been generated in the county attorney's office and sent down. That is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a juvenile justice incentive grant from the State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $393,955 with no local match awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Juvenile Court. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Now, that's the only item that has come down thus far. There may be other items that are generated later this week, so I would urge you to check the agenda when it's published on Friday afternoon and see what additional resolutions and or ordinances have come down and been added to the agenda for the committee meetings that will begin next week, July the 23rd at 9:00 in the morning in the conference room immediately behind us here. Now, it's time for public comments on non-agenda items, and I think several people signed up to speak to us in that regard, and we appreciate your patience and, and waiting for us. The first, see if I can get the, first is Ty Ivy, wants to talk to us about Amerson Water Park. Dr. Ivy, thank you very much for your patience and waiting for us. We appreciate you coming to the microphone, you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Will you push the button, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, say, say again, you're going to have to adjust that microphone, too, Dr. Ivy, so that we can hear you.
I just wondered when you were going to push the button, that's all right. I was trying to be cute, anyway. Mr. Mayor and, and members of the commission, I was, after reading the winesky Macon Telegraph last week, I was very concerned, because the impression I got from the front page article was that at, at this, at a meeting here, the discussion- was that at this, at a meeting here, the discussion on adding a disc golf course to the Amerson Water Park was something that was being done because the two disc golf course facilities in town were being oversubscribed and they needed another one. And furthermore, that, except for a few, except for a few curious cautious comments from a couple of the commissioners, it sounded like from the paper that this was a done deal, so this concerned me greatly because when I go to Amerson Water Park, and I'll get to this later why, I know what its original intention was, I know frisbee golf was not a part of it. As I stayed concerned during the week, I talked to a member of the commission, and I was encouraged to come tonight, so here I am. I've made a lot of inquiries during the week. I started out today at Bowden Golf Course. Intent there was to see this oversubscribed disc golf course and see how it was working. I'm not, I'm not against disc golf, I'm just against disc golf at the Amerson Water Park. I was somewhat concerned when I went to the golf course though, and when I looked at what looked like an excellent place to have a disc golf course, it was in total disrepair and obviously had been to me unused, and when I inquired in the pro shop, I was told that it was not in use. So that concerned me a little bit. As the day wore on, some of my other inquiries came back, and I'll get to that in just a minute. One thing I want to share with everybody is a conversation I had with Frank Amerson after Alberto had caused us to have a main event in nineteen ninety-four. And I went to Frank to see what he was going to do with this new land when it was obvious that the old waterworks was going to have to move. I was hopeful that he and I would be of the same mind, and I was overjoyed to find out that he too agreed that we didn't need another park to have athletic fields, and that what we needed was a nature park, somewhere where some, the average citizen could go out and walk in the woods and go by and by the river and enjoy a tranquil piece of nature, which is hard to create. We had an one hundred and eighty acre gift given to us by that storm. So you, I saw it with Ambrose Young and the firm that developed it out of Birmingham, I saw it grow to be exactly what I knew Frank Amerson wanted it to be. But then, this first, this disc golf was an encouragement that caused me to wonder if this was the beginning of us undoing on the twenty-fifth anniversary of this event, this wonderful park that we had been given. So, I want to read to the, I want to read as a matter of education, I have some copies here of the deed of transfer of the property to give to the correct committee, which I think might be Mr. Jones. But here is from the warranty deed, and I will read this to the commission. This indenture made on the twelfth day of May two thousand and five between the Macon Water Authority called the First Party and the Macon Bibb County Urban Develop Authority called the Second Party. And here's what it said. First Party conveys the property subject to the restriction that Second Party, its leasees, successors, and assigns shall only use the property for the purpose of a passive park, which would allow hiking, bicycling, picnicking, camping, kite flying, boating, canoeing, fishing, running, jogging, archery, bird watching, wildlife watching, unorganized games, playground play, sightseeing, adventure races, community activities, and similar activities. Second Party shall be allowed to construct improvements on the property which will facilitate access by the public its use as a passive park and will protect the park from uses other than those allowed within the definition of a passive park. Second Party shall further be allowed to conduct maintenance activities in order to make the park attractive and useful as a passive park. By way of example, such improvements and maintenance shall include but not be limited to the construction of gates and guardhouses at the entrance of the park so that it can be closed, mowing of the grass, and construction of boats and ramps. Those activities which shall not be included within the meaning of a passive park, including organized sports teams, competitive sports, and indoor, let's see, these activities shall not include organized sports teams, sports, competitive sports, or indoor sports of any kind. Examples of the type of events would be prohibited would include Little League Baseball and Midget Football programs. Further, no structures other than those to support the passive park may be constructed and specifically excluded our local, state, and federal government offices or buildings.
Dr. Matt, thank you very much, your time has expired, but that's well said, sir, and we'd love to get copies of the deed record, I think that's wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, sir, and you want to hand those up, if you would, to Commissioner Watkins right there, and he can hand them down to the clerk. That's great, oh, well, I think you found the court, okay, thank you very much, Dr. Matt. Next, Dr. Holliday wants to talk to us about competitive frisbee but not in the nature park. So, Dr. Holliday, you're recognized for up to five minutes.
What he said, which I think, I think in the deed it says there won't be any competitive sports. I think that's the way to solve this, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Holliday, I appreciate that. Next, we've got, this is Carly Megan Portervan and or Maxwell Thigpen. I hope I didn't mispronounce your name. You want?
You did well. We'd like to defer into a member who's on the license.
Okay, so defer, you'll come back another time?
No, sir, would you like to go after a second, if I'm not in the book? We've called into the book, someone's speaking for you.
They're saying there's somebody else that's speaking about the same topic.
Oh, okay, well, then, I guess, let's see if I can't take, let's see if I can't take it in a different order. Keith Earl Peacock is here and wants to talk to us about homelessness in Macon. Mr. Peacock? Oh, good, come to the microphone, please, sir, you're recognized for up to five minutes.
I address the Honorable Mayor and all the commissioners. My name's Keith Earl Peacock, I've been a longtime businessman here in Macon. You know, we have a large drug problem in Macon. I'd love to see it addressed more, and the crime rate, of course, we have, thank God, we have a good hospitalization, including to help these people. Me also being aggravated. We have the medical center, we have the Coliseum Park Hospital. Also, we got a lot of people that are homeless, including myself, which I was a victim of someone stealing my identification.
Adjust that microphone and speak directly into it so we can hear you.
Yes, sir, I was a victim of someone stealing my identification about a year ago, so I've become accustomed of sleeping in the woods and whatnot and doing the best I could, and going to daybreak and Salvation Army and the churches to feed and to survive. Now, I propose to go back into business because, you know, I was a successful sign painter and especially a successful tattoo artist. I'm proposing to open up a recording studio in Macon, and I've got somebody that wants to be in partnership with that. I'm also proposing to help find the people that do not have a place to live to go to, where they can have the freedom to go outside to smoke or to be able to go out to their nightlife. You know, I'm a member up here at St. Joseph Catholic Church, I'm actually a Catholic priest myself. So with that, commissioners, I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peacock. We appreciate you being here and sharing that with us, sir. Next, I've got Mr. Willie Frazier. Mr. Frazier, you still here with us? Yeah, there you are. Mr. Frazier wants to talk to us about homelessness in Macon, Bibb County, and a few other reminders. You're recognized for up to five minutes. Mr. Frazier, thank you for being here.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor? And thanks again for giving me this opportunity. I'm not going to speak, I didn't speak on an agenda item, but I do have an agenda this afternoon, and my agenda is homelessness in Macon-Bibb. I've been dealing with homelessness, you know, I guess I have personal experiences with homelessness because it hits all types of people. And as successful as I may look right now and having a job right now, I've been down that road to where I didn't have anything and didn't have anybody to go to, and so my heart goes out to homeless individuals like Mr. Peacock. You see, one thing that you recognize is that we may not look the same, we might not have the same pigment, we might not have the same, a lot of things, but we got the same issues of being, of knowing how it feel to be outdoors and outside. I met this man at one of the shows that I was doing Sunday, and I tried to reach out to him because I've already been reaching out to homeless people. I'm running for a commission seat in South Macon, and there is a homeless tent city in our area that I happened on some time back by mistake, and I've been trying to reach out to those people as well to try to help them, because it's a sad thing when people are living in the woods with no feasible way to do things. I think everybody in the city of Macon-Bibb deserves to be indoors somewhere. Mr. Peacock can find me anywhere else, but when I gave him my card, because I was honest about giving him my card and my phone number, he decided to come to your mayor's office and your government center to try to find me, and I'm that guy that he was talking about, about the promises of doing a business together because I believe in helping people that no fell on hard times, no matter what they've been through, no matter what they've done, no matter what the issues is, whether it be alcohol, drugs, or anything else. You know, you have to see a person for who they are and see a person for the struggles that they go through, because we in South Macon go through struggles every day. And the reason why I'm running for this district seat in South Macon is because I see the struggle daily. I talk to the individuals daily, I come out my door daily and see the same issues, see the same desolation, see the same hopelessness, and I really hope to change that. So I hope that everybody recognizes that this vote twenty-twenty, on the back of this shirt, it says, "Running for District Two Commissioner, Vote Willie Frazier." I pray that this community accept me to try to lead them into betterment in this society. I told the commission some time back that I have a love for what you do, and I'll try to help you in any kind of way I can, and this is a part of me helping you. I've already sent my intent in, and please vote for Willie Frazier for twenty-twenty so we can help these homeless individuals. I still got a love for Vineville Christian Towers, I still go over there to try to help those individuals, because it's not just a one-sided-town thing, it's an every-side-of-Macon thing. And the thing about it is I'm always staying for Macon, because know this, I'm straight out of Macon, and I still believe in Macon, and I still believe in this city. Thank you for my five minutes, Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Frazier. We appreciate you being here. Next, we've got Anthony Harris that wants to talk to us about the drug problem in Macon. Mr. Harris, thank you for being here and for your patience, sir, you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, it is right.
Nice segue to what I'm going to talk about.
Please address your comments to the chair, sir.
All right, so first of all, let's be thankful we all have the freedom of speech we have to do this. Unfortunately, there's a lot in this country, a lot of people in this country, state, and city, they would like to take that away from us. Let's be thankful they just remain on Facebook. So I want to address the rampant and unmonitored sales of drugs and use in some of our local nightclubs and bars. Now, I'm not going to address particular places that I have not frequented or have not been in in, say, six years, but I will address one that I have been in quite a bit, and that also has a back patio that is open to the citizens of Macon, and that's the Hummingbird on Cherry Street. So it doesn't take much to go back there, walk down that alley that goes behind the Hummingbird, in between that and the parking garage that is behind there, and there's constant use and sales of drugs. It's pretty obvious, it doesn't take a Sherlock Holmes or a scientist to realize it when you go back there and smell it. So I'm just kind of wondering why nothing's been done about that. Again, it only takes an officer or two to walk back there and notice it. I don't want to think that it has something to do with, you know, the ownership of the place or whatever, the business in the city for so long, and trying to ignore the fact that that's going on because it is an establishment that's been around for a while. I don't want to think it has anything to do with that, but as these gentlemen said right here, Willie and Keith, you know, if you want to clean that up and you want to better people, then that's one of the places to start. And the city as well is trying to make downtown more family-friendly, they want people to come downtown, they want people to move downtown, I'm sure you want families downtown. Well, that's not a really good spot for that to be going on since people park back there when they want to go to Theater Macon, they park back there to go to eat, they bring their kids, loved ones, family members, out-of-town visitors, and there it is going on, right there on the back patio of the Hummingbird. So, that's all I got to say about it. What happens, happens. I'm already the most hated man in this city. All I say is bring it on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, we appreciate it. One, we'll be sure to pass this along to the sheriff's office, I don't know if you've already done that, but we'll.
I've already signed up the cop sheriff.
Okay, but we'll certainly pass that along to him because that is an issue of concern. Mr. Portervan, do you still wish to be heard, sir?
Oh. Mayor, commissioners, my name's LaFaye Thigpen, I'm a retired Air Force officer and currently the president of BJ Billiards on four thirty MLK. The reason I'm here this evening to address you is that there was a publication put out by a Mr. Anthony B. Harris that just spoke to you, stating that he would be here tonight to represent to you that BJ Billiards was negligent in, we were allowing in drug use and drug sales in our business. This letter you may or may not have seen, but we're here to contest that. He made a comment during his statement that he wouldn't address a place he hadn't been recently, he only spoke of one establishment. The reason he didn't address our establishment is because on the fourteenth of January two thousand and fourteen, Mr. Harris battered a member of our staff because we refused his entry. He was arrested and taken away in the back of a Macon police car, and we've not seen him since that date. Mr. Harris has accused us of allowing drug use and sales, and I'm not sure where he gets this idea, then he hasn't been to our establishment in five and a half years. We emphatically reject his allegations that he has published, although not presented to you today, but does state that he will see the sheriff and represent that information to the sheriff. Now, some of you have been to BJ Billiards, and your family members have been to BJ Billiards. Some of you have not, or if you have, I haven't seen you. Some of you have not, or if you have, I haven't seen you. I do encourage you to visit us so you can learn the truth. We're a safe, law-abiding business, and we're a proud contributor to the social fabric of the Macon community. I thank you for your time. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, thank you, Mr. Thickpen. We, we appreciate you being in, appreciate your comments, sir. Uh, finally, Mr. Donald Richardson is here. Uh, Ms. Richardson, uh, has some grassroots reflections for us. Uh, Ms. Richardson, you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
The Book of Job. Two threads requiring to be followed, therefore run through the Book of Job. One, the discussion of the problem of evil between Job and his friends, and the other, the varying attitude of Job's minds towards God. The first being subordinate to the second. Both Job and his friends advanced to the discussion of his sufferings and of the problem of evil ignorant of the true cause of his calamities. Job strong in his sense of innocence and the friends armed with their theory of the righteousness of God, who give it to every man according to his works. With fine psychological instinct, the poet lets Job's work altogether lose his self-control first, when his three friends came to visit him. His bereavements and his malady he bore with a steady courage, and his wife's direct instigations to godliness he repelled with severity and resignation. But when his equals and the old associates of his happiness came to see him, and when he read in their looks and in their seven-day silence the death of his own misery and his self-command deserted him, and he broke out into a cry of despair, cursing his day and crying for death in chapter three. Job had somewhat misinterpreted the demeanor of his friends. It was not all pity that it expressed. Along with their pity, they had also brought their theology, and they trusted to heal Job's malady with this. Till a few days before, Job would have agreed with them on the sovereign virtues of this remedy. But he had learned through a higher teaching the events of God's providence, and it was no longer a specific in his case. His violent impatience, however, under his affliction, and his covert attacks upon the divine rectitude only served to confirm the view of his sufferings, which their theory of evil had already suggested to his friends, and thus commences the high debate which continues through twenty-nine chapters. The three friends of Job came to consideration his history, with the principle that calamity is, is the result of evil-doing as prosperity is the reward of righteousness. Suffering is not an accident or spontaneous growth of the soul. Man is born into trouble as the sparks fly upwards. There is in human life a tendency to do evil, which draws down upon men, the chastisement of God in verse six. The principle is thus enunciated by Eleifus, from whom the other speakers take their cue. Where there is suffering, there has been sin in the sufferer, not suffering in itself, but the effect of it on the sufferer is what gives insight into his true character. Suffering is not always punitive. It is sometimes disciplinary, designed to wean the good man from his sin. If he sees in his suffering the admonition of God and turns from his evil, his future shall be rich in peace and happiness, and is later est- estimate more prosperous than his first. If he murmurs or resists, he can only perish under the multiplying chastisement which his impenitence will provoke. Now, this principle is far from being a peculiar crochet of the friends, its truth is undeniable, though they err in supposing that it will cover the wide providence of God. The principle is the fundamental idea of moral government, the expression of the natural conscience, a principle common more or less to all people, though perhaps more prominent in Semitic mind, because all religious ideas are more prominent simply, simple there, not suggested to Israel first by the law, but found and adopted by the law, though it may be sharpened by it. It is the fundamental principle of prophecy no less than of the law, and if possible, of the wisdom philosophy of the Hebrews more than in either. Speculation among the Hebrews had a simpler task before it than it had in the West or in the Far East. The Greek philosopher began his operation under the Psalm of Things. He threw the universe into his crucible at once. It might electionary the Book of Common Prayer, it's the Book of Job, so I'm just letting you know what I'm following, and this is a commentary.
Thank you very much, Ms. Richardson. We, we appreciate you being in, appreciate you sharing those grassroots reflections, uh, with us. Uh, we have reached the end of our agenda, no other, uh, public comments, uh, no, 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 five, five-minute, five-minute limit, limitation, we've reached that, and no points of personal privilege, uh, having been requested. Can I get a motion to, a motion to adjourn without objection? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Okay, two things. Did you get the sense from Mr. White today that he's not gonna continue with Bumble? So are we not going to Bumble Christian Towers?
What, what are you talking about?
He didn't get the money from ECD. He didn't follow. For Bumble Christian Towers, they're buying a letter that he didn't follow.